Okay. I'm going to call the meeting of the Policy Personnel and Appointments Committee together this evening and would ask that the clerk call the roll for purposes of establishing the presence of a quorum.
Ammons, Gladney.
Present.
Hunt, Knott, McGinty.
Here.
Nudo.
Here.
Schrader, Wyble.
Here.
Betts.
Here. We have a quorum. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the proviso that public comment, there's one individual that needs to leave early this evening, and I would ask that Mr. Robert Rich be allowed to speak before the presentation briefly if there is no objection to that.
Move approval.
Seconded by Nudo. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same motion carries. Mr. Rich.
Good evening. Some of you know who I am. Let me just say briefly, I'm Director of the Institute of Government and Public Affairs here at the University of Illinois. And what's clear to me about this proposed resolution is that the authors of the resolution are concerned that the auditor's job has not been properly performed up to this moment in time, or at least in recent history, and that there's a question of whether or not the auditor's job is, as it's currently structured, is required, and a good question as to whether or not the auditor's job should be an elected position at all. And I guess that what I want to leave you with is the notion is, I think that, I'd urge you not to judge the answer to those questions on the basis of the performance of a single auditor, and that you ask the question of, and document whether or not the auditor's job is required in the county. My own judgment, that is, yes, it is required in the county, and then ask the question of whether or not the people of the county should be the ones electing the auditor as well, as opposed, as compared with having an appointed official. Whereas I agree with the notion that we want, that the auditor's job requires a certain level of professionalism, and requires certain professional skills, and that we want the auditor to be a professional as opposed to a politician, purely speaking. I mean, I think one can achieve that by having the board require certain professional education standards of the auditor, whether they're elected or not, and requiring that continuing education standards be there as well. So where I come down on this resolution is, I think it's premature. And I think it's premature because I don't think that now, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe you've had a full discussion here as to what the functions need to be, and whether it needs to be a full-time job, and what the level of standards for performance should be, but I'd urge you to have that discussion. And I guess I'm a strong believer in the end that we, the voters, should be the ones to elect county officials, and that I find it interesting that we're proposing to have the voters decide about elimination of the office, but we're less comfortable having them vote for who should be in the office. So bottom line is that I urge you to study this more, in the sense of specifying what we want the auditor to be, judging this on the basis of professional standards as opposed to our unhappiness with a particular auditor, and then adopting certain professional standards for what we want the auditor to do, including education, continuing education standards as well. So that's where I'm at, and Tom, thanks for letting me speak.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. I'm going to do what I did last night, which is, I'm going to let the elected official present his view on this matter. I'm going to take a seat, and when he's finished, I will come back, and we will open it up to the other side.
I'd like to start by thanking Tom Betts, but also thanking the committee for allowing me to speak tonight. I've put together a PowerPoint presentation. I understand that's what all of the elected officials are doing these days, so I've passed out paper copies of that. I'm assuming all the board members got it. If there are any extras, I don't know where they, they're up here in front? Okay. Okay. Why we need an elected county auditor. When this discussion comes up, I usually find a lot of people have very strong opinions about it without necessarily having a, a strong understanding of what the office actually does. And so I wanted to start with a discussion about what the county auditor's office does in Champaign County and in Illinois generally. The auditor's office has several functions, and those change over time. If you recall, when my predecessor was auditor, the auditor's office actually handled payroll for the county. We don't do that anymore. When I was still on the county board, the vote was to remove that function from the auditor's office. Frankly, I didn't support it as a board member, but as auditor, I think that's turned out to be a good change. The reason we had things like payroll under the umbrella of the auditor's office was that we do general accounting for the county. At the most basic level, that just means we count the money. We keep track of money coming in and money going out. But there's much more, much more to the accounting that the auditor's office does than just that. A large part of the systems we set up for accounting for Champaign County are set up for the purpose of maintaining internal controls. This is really the most significant task of the auditor's office, fraud prevention. Now, when I say that, I think people's feathers get ruffled somewhat, and are you saying there's fraud going on? And no, and quite the opposite. By putting systems in place that make the price of committing fraud, or the likelihood of successfully committing fraud, to lower the likelihood and increase the risk, we set up these accounting systems that, things like, when we print checks, we don't have accounts payable checks sitting somewhere that are already numbered, or that are, you know, blank, and it's not a matter of you can just print a check out with a number on it. We have pre-printed checks with numbers on them. So if there's a check out there with a number that is not in sequence, that can't be accounted for, that's going to raise a red flag. And things like that, you know, it would be easier just to have blank paper and print checks out as you go, but there's a, there's a risk involved in doing that. And so our office is really focused on minimizing those risks. You have to balance efficiency with that. Those are the things that the accountants in the office spend a lot of time talking about, what the, what is, what is a prevention that's worth the additional effort. The largest part of what we do just from a time point of view is accounts payable. The auditor's office acts as the comptroller for the county. We write the checks, and that really takes up two and a half of the accountants in the office, is what they do all the time. We have weekly check writings, and that's, that's what that, that goes for. While doing all of these other things, we're doing a continuous audit. We're making sure, just on a day-to-day basis, as we're sending out checks, as we're getting money coming in, as we're looking at vouchers and the documentation for those vouchers, we're doing a continuous audit. Again, fraud prevention, and also just preventing mistake, preventing loss. And then we also do the annual audit. Not every county auditor in the state actually does their annual audit in-house, but we do, and we have a pretty good record on that. I know that each of the two annual audits I've been involved in have been recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Those of you on finance are familiar with this, because the county also submits our budget to the GFOA, and we recently heard that our budget procedures received the Excellence in Budgeting Award from GFOA. And I know Chair McGinty was talking about that at finance, about how it's a sign that we're doing, we're doing things in the right way, as far as budgeting goes, and the same is true with financial reporting. I can take credit for the two years, but this office has a long history of excellence in financial reporting, going all the way back to when Laurel Pressing was county auditor. So these are, these are generally speaking what the office does, and in each of these things, they may sound administrative or just clerk-like duties, but if you think about what you run up to, what the challenges you run into when you do these things, having the authority and the independence of an elected official overseeing this office makes all of these things work better. You know, a lot of the internal controls are things that a department head may not want to do a receipt for every expenditure they do, and may think that, well, this is an exception, and I trust that person. We set up these systems for a reason, and we try to implement them even-handedly throughout the county, and sometimes you need an elected official, with the authority of an elected official, to enforce some of these internal control rules. Okay. Getting into the state statute, the office isn't just a creation of the county board. It isn't just a creation of what I decide we should do is all we do. There's a state statute, I've included this in the packet, that talks very specifically about what the duties of the auditor's office are. When people say, what is the job of the auditor's office, if they're really interested, I could show them the statute that says precisely what the responsibilities of the auditor's office is. A couple interesting tidbits about the state statute is that only counties in Illinois that have a population of over 75,000 are even allowed to have an elected, an elected auditor. So it's true that I think there are, I think there's only 17 elected auditors in the state. However, that represents all but two of the counties in the state that are even able by, by state statute to have an elected office. So the overwhelming majority of counties that have this option available, take it. And I know Professor Rich mentioned continuing education, and that's something that is in the current state statute. I'm required, as is every elected auditor, to obtain 20 hours of continuing education every year. I have the certificates that show completion of that requirement for the two previous years, and I'm well on my way on the third. Specifically, the statutory duties of the auditor, and this gets a little dry, but we audit all claims against the county and recommend to the county board the payment or rejection of all claims presented. If you were at the finance committee this past week, I actually had a pretty lengthy discussion about what the payment of claims report is that we give you every month. That big, thick packet that either gets mailed to you in paper copy or emailed to you, that packet represents all of the, the claims against the county. Just as an example, last month, that was a 270-page document representing over $7 million of expenditures. It wasn't a particularly unusual month, that's, that's pretty standard. And the auditors, or the accountants in the auditor's office, put that document together for the board. If you think about that in conjunction with the purchases not following the purchasing policy list, that covers all of the expenditures, all of the claims for the county on any given We collect, analyze, and preserve statistical and financial information with respect to the cost of operation of the various institutions and facilities maintained, operated, or owned by the county. We do that, and that information is kept up on a regular basis, and is published every year in our annual audit. We approve all orders for supplies issued by the various county offices, officers, before the orders are to be placed with the parties to whom the same are to be given. That's the accounts payable rule of the office. We maintain a file of all contracts entered into by the county board and all authorized county officers for or on behalf of the county. That's a requirement that they put on the auditor, as well as the county clerk, and I don't know what our county clerk does, but our county administrator has put, has started just in the past year to put all contracts online. We do not go ahead and print out a paper copy of what's online, as long as that is there. That's how we're meeting that statutory requirement. We report quarterly to the county board the entire financial operations of the county, including revenues anticipated and received, expenditures estimated and paid, obligations unpaid, the condition of all funds and appropriations and other pertinent information. We actually do a monthly report to the county. The auditor's report that we give to the finance committee is where we keep, where we keep that information. We're required to do it quarterly, but we, we do it monthly. We audit the receipts of all county officers and departments presented for deposit with county treasurer. That's the money coming in. We maintain a continuous internal audit of the operations and financial records of the officers, agents, or divisions of the county. The county auditor shall have access to all records, documents, and resources necessary for the discharge of this responsibility. Here, that's, that both puts a duty on the office holder as a, as a job that we have to do. It also gives some authority to the office holder. As an elected official, I'm empowered by state law to get whatever information I need to do the job of auditor. I don't know if a appointed auditor would have the same statutory authority that an elected auditor would, but it's something that I literally have had to refer other department heads to that part of the state statute, to make sure that we're getting the information we need. We audit the inventory of all real and personal property owned by the county under the control and management of the various officers and departments of the county, and we do that on a continuous basis. The information there is in our annual audit each year. We audit the documentation, records, and bases for the amounts billed to the county as maintained by county vendors under agreements between the county and its vendors, when those agreements provide that the amounts billed to the county are based upon actual costs incurred by the vendor, or when those agreements include the requirement that the county provide a reimbursement for out-of-market costs incurred by the vendors. This is basically saying that we, when we set up our internal controls, we need to keep receipts, we need to keep, if we're making a payment to a vendor, a contractor, for example, based on work they did for the county, we need to see the contract that says the county's actually required to pay these people the money that they say they are. And again, on all of these, the vast majority of the time, this just isn't an issue, but it's not an issue because there's an office that requires it of every, every transaction, and so that's part of internal controls for, for taxpayer protection. And then, this doesn't apply to every county, but in counties of 275,000 population or less, the auditor is the general accountant of the county and keeps its general accounts. So the computer accounting system that the county has, and that's under Part B, devise and install a system of financial records, those are all maintained by the auditor's office, and it's the responsibility of the auditor's office to make sure that, for example, with the nursing home, talking about wanting to change their accounting system so they could do accrual-based accounting. You know, there was a notion that the auditor's office was opposed to accrual-based accounting. We just wanted to be included in whatever discussions of an accounting system the nursing home was doing, because we're required by state statute to, to be the office that devises the system of financial records. We need to be involved in, in all of that. A couple weeks ago, I know Mark Sheldon had previously purchased new accounting software for his office, and he was in a meeting with auditor's office staff, making sure that the things we needed to get from an accounting system were included in that system. Okay. So you've got all these responsibilities, but why do you need an elected auditor to do all these responsibilities? And I have a few arguments why, why I think very strongly that you need an elected auditor. The first is just the principle of checks and balances. I don't, I don't have a Winston Churchill quote, and I don't go back to the Magna Carta, but I do think about things like checks and balances. I do think about the founders of this nation, and what, the genius of what they did wasn't that Americans are just better people than in other countries. They created a system that was designed for human beings, and sometimes there are people who, through honest disagreements, through dishonest theft, or through other issues, might not have the best interest of the public at heart. And they set up a system of checks and balances where we're not reliant on, on the good graces of any one person. And we see this up and down our federal government, our state government, and locally, I think the auditor's office is a, is a strong reflection of checks and balances. As an elected official, I am accountable directly to the voters. I am watching the county board, and the reason we're all here tonight is you guys are watching me, and this is a system that's designed specifically so that I'm not beholden to the county board, and I'm not beholden to a county administrator. I can do my job the best that I know how to do, and I'm accountable directly to the voters. The same for the county board. So I'll come back to these other two points, but if you move ahead, this is a, this is an egocentric county auditor view of the flowchart for county government. These, all power in county government comes from the voters. The voters elect the county board, the voters elect the county auditor, and the voters elect other elected department heads, the county clerk, the state's attorney, the court of deeds. And of course, the county administrator is hired by the county board, the appointed department heads report to the county administrator. And this is the, a rough diagram of what county government currently works at, works like. And, you know, if you see, as a, as an elected official directly responsible to the voters, I'm on an even footing with the county board and with the other elected department heads. There are cases where it's a matter of give and take. I don't, I don't trump anyone. I've worked with the treasurer on many different things, I've worked with the county board on different issues, and the same for the appointed department heads. They don't answer to me, but then I don't answer to them or to their supervisor either. Now, it's not clear what system exactly would, would replace the elected auditor. It could be that, this is one possible solution, where you've got the county board, which hires a county administrator, and the county administrator oversees a county auditor that's appointed, along with other appointed department heads. So this is a model where, like, I'm trying to think of a good example, the youth detention center, Joe Gordon is an appointed official. This would have the county auditor in that position. You could also put it under an elected, another elected department head. I don't know what the, the board envisions, but if you'll see, that drastically changes the relation between the auditor and the other officials, that the auditor has to have oversight over their finances. So if the, the county auditor needs information from another elected department head, you can look at the flowchart and just see how much influence you would have in that situation. There's a reason why the earlier flowchart is the way state statute sets up an elected office in larger counties, and I think the, the alternative is a good example, is a good argument for why it is, it is the way it is. Okay. Checks and balances. I've already given you my founder's genius argument, but if we look at situations where we don't have a system of checks and balances set up, we have similar situations like this. The, the most infamous example of a system where you have in-house auditors who are hired by the folks in charge, they're making the actual financial decisions from the private sector, is Enron. That was a classic case where the, the auditors had a financial incentive to give the answers that management wanted. It worked out great until it didn't, and then it failed spectacularly. In a government setting, and I don't know any insider information beyond what we've all read in the newspaper, but we had a situation with CU Public Health a couple years ago, where you had a, a internal auditor who reported directly to the person that there were suspicions wasn't, was misusing the, the credit cards for CU Public Health. And literally, there was a, a conflict of interest. The, the internal auditor was, didn't know if, if she should report the misdeeds of, or the perceived misdeeds of the supervisor, and when she did, she was fired. So this isn't just, you know, scare tactics. What I say that, you know, the, the system that is set up needs to be one where you don't have the conflict of interest potentials, where you don't have someone in a position of financial oversight who is trying to have financial oversight over their superior. Could this happen in Champaign County? Sure, it could. And it doesn't in Champaign County. I can tell you, when folks read the stories about CU Public Health, I know that every department head just slapped their head and said, well, that, that just couldn't have happened here. That the things that were going on just simply couldn't happen, not because we're better or more noble or anything like that. We have systems in place that just, it wouldn't have, that money wouldn't have gone out. Eliminating the elected auditor weakens what is a very good financial control system here in Champaign County. And, you know, I think it's, as, just as I have a duty directly to the voters to protect taxpayer dollars, the county board does as well, and so, you know, thinking about the systems you're thinking about changing, there, there are some unforeseen consequences that could happen if you start changing a system that really does provide a lot of protection for tax dollars. An independent auditor saves money. As I'm sure everyone in this room knows, I am, I am not an accountant. I don't hold a CPA. I do have a law degree from a fine institution here in, in central Illinois, the University of Illinois, and, but I have a staff which has three and a half accountants working on them. My chief deputy is a CPA, and the other two full-time accountants have accounting degrees, as does the part-time accountant in the office. Those professionals within the auditor's office prevent fraud, loss, and misspending of taxpayer funds by auditing county expenditures. And, and the auditor's office accountants do not report to the individuals they must audit. And if you, you know, I'm not, I think what Professor Rich stated earlier, I really appreciate it. This isn't, this isn't about me, and I'm not trying to convince anyone in this room that, you know, you should vote for me for reelection. I'm here to convince you that the system of an elected auditor, regardless of the individuals in place, think 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, is, is important to Champaign County. And so if you think about the system that we have, take me out of the equation entirely, assume that I personally bring nothing to the equation, the accountants in that office do it a phenomenal job, and I don't think there is anyone who questions the professionalism and just the successful results of the staff in the auditor's office. And they are able to do their job largely because they work for an elected official who is not accountable to the county board or to the county administrator, but accountable directly to the voters. And that's, that's the third point, is that as an elected, as an elected official, I have an authority and an independence that allows the accountants in the office, the professionals in that office, to do their jobs. I, I was joking- I was joking with a department head the other day. She'd snapped at one of the staff in the office, and she was apologizing and saying, you know, she shouldn't have yelled at the staff person. And my joke was, "Well, I'm the one that's paid to get yelled at." And that's true. I fight the battles of the auditor's office. I don't go through every voucher myself, but when a voucher's flagged as something that's problematic, the accountant will first make, you know, an inquiry to the finance person in the other department, you know, "How can we fix this? How can we make this work?" And a lot of times, it's solved at that level, but a lot of times, it isn't. A lot of times, there's pushback, and there's people who want to get things done now and don't want to deal with getting the receipt, getting the multiple bids, whatever it is that we happen to be asking in a given situation. And as an elected official, I have the authority to come in and get that done. I also have the independence of, if there's something that I think doesn't look right, I could go directly to the public. I could go directly to the county board. You know, I like to make friends and be a friendly guy, but I really don't, I don't care if I step on toes or ruffle feathers. That's, the luxury I have is that I worry about the voters and the taxpayers, and I don't have to worry about making another department head angry at me or making the county board angry at me. Let me give you a couple of examples of times where I've stepped forward, and yet I'll tell you, these are examples that a lot of the folks on the county board probably don't want to see. But again, that's sort of the point. Back in 2007, funds intended for the bridge construction and maintenance were planned to be diverted to pay for the pedestrian bridge in front of the new highway facility. Anyone who's, when you're heading home tonight, look at that blue pedestrian bridge in front of the highway facility. That was, make sure to walk on it because it cost you $50,000. And it doesn't seem to go anywhere, but it was a $50,000 bridge. And it's fine that the county board wanted to spend that money, but the initial proposal was to take that money from the county highway bridge fund. There are state statutes that define where that money has to be spent, and it needs to be spent for bridge safety and construction and maintenance. And a pedestrian bridge that is essentially landscaping really is not at all what these funds are intended for. And, you know, there was a big question about, can this, how do we deal with this? What do we? And finally, I just saw my authority, said, "You know, this doesn't follow state law. I'm not going to release the money." As soon as I did that, our highway engineer said, "You know, you're right. We'll do it another way." Those funds were protected and went towards their intended purpose. They went towards bridge maintenance, bridge construction. If I worked for a county administrator and I was a colleague of the department head that I was having this discussion with, I don't know that I would be as free to just make that judgment. And then, you know, again, none of this says anything about our current county administrator, our current highway engineer. These are, you know, systematic issues. These are things with, I felt, because my duty is to the voters directly, that I was able to do what I thought was right to protect taxpayer dollars in that case. And under a different system, an auditor might not have felt that free. Example two, the Champaign County nursing home. And again, this is one that I'm guessing there are some county board members that don't like this example, but this is an example where, this is the last one dealt with a department head. This one deals with the county board. I presented back in the summer of 2007 a memo. We were first confronted with issues of the nursing home finances and problems there. And I looked at what was an expenditure that seemed to be going out of control, contract nursing. I went to the board, I said, "This is an issue." Board members said, "No, it isn't. Go away." And, you know, I was able to publicize an issue that I think two years down the road, you know, I just heard the nursing home report from MPA, and, you know, contract nursing is something they are desperately trying to tackle here. Since then, I've said other things about the nursing home. I've made presentations about nursing home finances that the information that we were getting from other sources about the nursing home painted a much rosier picture at one point than the information we were seeing in the auditor's office. I know there was a time in, I think it was early 2008, when our nursing home administrator was telling the board that the home had had a deficit of $200,000. It turned out to be 1.4 million, and I said that that night. As a county board, I would hope that you appreciate getting information from different sources. And, you know, I, as a board member, I love the county nursing home. I fought for the county nursing home. But as an elected official, I don't have any stake in the county nursing home. I don't have any stake in presenting a rosy picture for the county nursing home. My interest is only in presenting accurate information about the county nursing home, and making sure that the decision-makers, at the time, that was the county board, that the decision-makers had accurate information. And again, that has to do with the independence that being an elected official allowed me. Fronty no bid contract. So we had one example of an appointed department head, one example of the county board, this is an example with another elected official. And this was in the fall of 2008. And again, this is, as with the vast majority of issues that we deal with, this wasn't a nefarious attempt by our county clerk to do anything, but he believed that he was only bound by, that the only relevant ordinance was county ordinance, and that he was exempt from it. But there's also state statutes dealing with purchasing of equipment by county officials. And so there was a specific purchase that was over the minimum allowed for, the requirement for open bidding to kick in. Now, open bidding is something that saves taxpayer money. If you're required to get so many bids, or if you're required to have open bids on something, over the long run, on any given project, it might not help you, but over the long run, you could save tens, hundreds, or thousands of dollars by having this enforced. This was actually worked out pretty amicably between the county clerk and myself, but it really was something that the auditor's office said, "No, you're not following the law. You need to do that." The actual purchase in that case was changed so that we didn't spend the money that we thought we were going to spend. But again, in the big picture, it was enforcing the open bidding requirements, which in the long run, saves money. Lastly, there's voter rights. And, you know, individuals can think that the voters make bad decisions. You can believe that. That's fine. But we're a government of buying for the people, and the people have a right to elect the officials that oversee their money. Taking that away from the voters is something that shouldn't be done lightly, and it really shouldn't be done because you don't like the choice that they happen to make. Accountability. I, you know, I know that, you know, I have to stand before the voters, and if the voters don't like the job I've done, you know, I'm going to be out of a job. And I am free to not care what the county board thinks, I'm free to not care what other department heads think, but I do care what the voters think. And that's an accountability that an appointed official doesn't have to face. And then I know there are some who would say, "Well, you know, I don't really, I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other, but golly gee, I think the voters ought to be able to decide whether we want to have an elected auditor." And that's fine, but if you care about voter input, we have a system right now where the voters have input every four years on who their auditor is and whether their auditor's doing a good job. If this goes on the ballot in 2010, it could be that for, you know, whatever reason, they vote not to, you know, throw the bums out. And then we've denied the voters any input on who their auditor is ever again. So it's not just a vote to, "Well, let's see what the voters think." This is a vote to take away a right that voters have and have had in this county for decades, and so I don't think that should be entered into lightly. And then for some who are newer to the county board, you know, it might be that, "Gosh, reform ideas. This sounds great. I'm for reform, and why hasn't anyone thought of this before?" And if you've followed Champaign County government for a while, you know that this is an idea that has come up frequently in our recent history. And eliminating the elected officer, the elected auditor has been considered several times, and each time, the board has decided that this reform would not, in fact, improve county government. I see that Mayor Pressing's here, and she knows more about the history when she was auditor than I do, but I do know that my first day in the office, I opened up the drawer next to my desk, and I found an old, yellowed copy of the News Gazette with an article about the county board trying to remove Laurel Pressing as the elected auditor and the same thing we're doing now. I thought that was a nice welcome gift from my predecessor. I know in 1999, there was an attempt, I know that Ms. Wasaki and Mike Graham worked together on looking at the issue at that time. And again, I wasn't on the board at the time myself, but it was decided not to move forward. I know in 2003, I was on the board, and I was actually on the committee that put forward the options for reform in 2003. And, you know, that time again, the decision was, this is not a reform that saves the county or the taxpayers money. And just in case there's any confusion about my role in that effort, this is the quote from the section on the auditor's office that we, that the report that Bob Kirchner and I wrote together and presented to the board. "It is unlikely that the duties of the auditor's office could be absorbed by any existing county department while maintaining the independence the office currently enjoys." We put the proposal forward because, and I think Brendan and Greg Knott would probably say the same thing, it's one of the three offices that you can consider putting forward in this manner. At the time, it just seemed obvious that it wasn't the right way to go with the auditor's office. And so I'd just like to encourage the board to not think that you're blazing a new trail here, but to look at the experience of previous board members. And, you know, you're treading on territory that's been tread before, and it's been decided that it's not a fruitful path. For those of you who have the packets, I also have the, a copy of the statute in here, and then some letters and memos that document the examples that I gave in there earlier. Just in conclusion, I, you know, I think that Champaign County has a strong record of financial management and of financial oversight. And I think a big part of that has been the history of a strong and active elected auditor's The roles of the elected auditor are not simply clerical, they're not simply administrative. This is a position that makes decisions about, to put it in the simple terms, that makes decisions about which battles to fight and which ones not to. Makes decisions about how best to accomplish the internal controls and the protections and the oversight that the state statute requires and that the professionals in the office recommend. So with that, I guess I'll end the presentation, and I don't know if I welcome questions or if we go to public participation, but I'll turn it over to Chair Betts now.
Thank you, Tony. Do we have a presentation this evening in support of an appointed auditor for a formal presentation? Seeing none, the next order of business is public comment. This committee does allow public comment. We do not have direct limitations on the time that you use at the podium. What I would ask is that, because we have a lot of people that have requested, to try to be concise. That would be useful, but we don't have a time limit.
Mr. Chairman, just before we get to that, last night, we placed all of the materials on file for the other presentations.
That would be fine. I would entertain such a motion.
So moved.
Second by Nudo. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same motion carries. In addition, I will let Tony know or anyone else that you can supplement the file, just as we told the folks last night. They can either send it to me, send it to Chair Wybel, or give it to the administrators, and we will make it part of the record. Since we do not have any formal motions before the board in terms of any of the positions, this is an ongoing process. Rick Winkle, welcome back to the county board after all these years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm now with the Institute of Government Public Affairs. I'm the Director of the Office of Public Leadership. And I probably should, before I get started, give my disclaimer. Part of my bias, I suppose, in what I'm about to say this evening is, I come from a family that's long been involved in local government. My father was county auditor in Cankey County for 29 years. Elected, bucked a system, several reforms. It was tough going, and he ended up being the most popular vote getter in the county and the lowest-paid county auditor in the state. But I think he thought it was worth it. And during that time, I would hear my father talk about his colleague from Champaign County. And as I moved down here and became a part of the Champaign County culture and became more aware of the politics in county government through the '90s was my initial becoming aware. I was aware that there wasn't always, there was independence that was exhibited by the county auditor's office. There was a check and balance that Mr. Fabry was referring to that was there. It was an office that enjoyed the prestige and the authority that's endowed through being elected. And being able then, by that election, as a county, elected county auditor, just as my father did in Cankey County, to go toe-to-toe with other elected officials with whom they may disagree, with whom they may need documentation, I think it's important. And so that's my bias, but that's, I think it's important to have elected officials be the county auditor. As you look at the Constitution, there's a pretty clear delineation of what the state powers are and what the county powers are. I'm not here to tell you what you can do. You know that you can put out a referendum if you wish and ask the people if they want to eliminate the elected office of county auditor. That's this board's prerogative. It's a constitutional right. I would urge you not to exercise that right. As I look at the county auditor's duties, and that was, it was, I'm not going to redo the PowerPoint that you just saw, I would encourage you to go through it step by step, give it some thought and consideration. You know, I mean, the notion that the county auditor will audit the claims, that the auditor will preserve and analyze financial information, approve orders, contracts, report monthly, look at all the receipts, the internal audit, do the inventory of real and personal property, look at the amounts that are billed, and look at the amounts that are to be paid. You need somebody that has the independent footing of an elected county official to be able to perform those statutory duties, in my opinion. Now, what if the county auditor, what if a county auditor fails or refuses to fulfill the duties of the office? Well, in Illinois, there's no recall of elected officials, state or local. Removal from office can only occur at the end of the term, and if an office holder doesn't seek reelection, you know that. The office holder runs for reelection is defeated, that could end it. The office holder resigns, dies, or successfully runs for higher office. That's the way it's worked for That's the way it's worked for, for decades and decades in Illinois with elected officials. The people have the choice. The people have the power to choose. I wouldn't change that. I would not take that from the people. I looked at the proposed resolution and it's, it's drafted, I believe, in an effort to put, put a legitimate question before the people. I, I don't have a problem with the words that were used in particular, but I do have some questions from the language. As I look at a couple of the paragraphs, one of the paragraphs is, "Whereas the Champaign County Board recognizes the office of elected auditor has become unnecessary for the functioning of the day-to-day activities as well as oversight of the office." What does that mean? Does this mean that an elected county official can no longer perform the statutory duties of county auditor? Why? How did that happen? All of a sudden, the county auditor as an elected official can't oversee or run an What has changed? What has changed? Yeah. And I think the emphasis has to be, you know, are you talking about a specific individual office holder? Or are you talking about a structural change that's happened in Champaign County that now necessitates an appointed rather than an elected official to do these statutory duties? My question is, what is that change that's occurred in the structure? Or what is it that requires a change in the structure to have an appointed official? I, I simply don't, I don't embrace the idea that a county, that an elected county official can't do these duties. The next paragraph, looking at the resolution, "Whereas the Champaign County Board deems a question of whether the county board, county auditor functions shall be performed by an elected official is a question best answered through public deliberation and the ultimate determination of the electors of Champaign County." Well, we can't have it both ways now, can we? Those are the same people that if we go with the argument that we need an appointed elected official, apparently aren't able to pick and elect the best office holder. And yet, at the same time, this is the best way to deliberate this issue and let those very same people decide? Do you see the irony? The twist? I, I, I think that that's, I don't think that was intended, but these are the same people that we have depended to elect. I've been elected, you've been elected. These are the same people that we entrust with our government. Let's not take away their prerogative to choose who the elected official is. You have that right to ask them. I would just urge you not to. Does this mean that only an appointed county official, only an appointed county official, appointed through a process established and maintained by elected county board members can perform these duties of the county auditor? Why? Ask yourself, why, how is this? Okay, if that's the case, what are the safeguards that you can put in this process, this new process for appointed county auditor that would safeguard the notion of checks and balances, that would safeguard the independence of the auditor, would also, and I hadn't thought of this until I heard Mr. Fabry's presentation, the ability of the elected county auditor to get documentation from other elected officials? Are you, are you confident and feel good that you can have safeguards in a process, which we haven't seen, by the way, that would safeguard that ability of the, the county auditor to get documentation that he or she needs to perform these functions? And if we have safeguards today, what's going to happen next year with the next, the next county board? Or 10 years from now? Or 20 years from now? Can you guarantee to me the safeguards that might be put into a process are going to be kept and not altered? That an independent check and balance of an appointed official, maybe this year, maybe next year, that that can be preserved and guaranteed to the, to the people for the indefinite future? No. As county boards come and go, and we all come and go, you know, I, I've gone. You know, we, we do leave office eventually, each and every one of us.
You're back.
Yeah, I'm back, but I'm not an elected official, then am I? It's different. It's different, let me tell you. I have no vote. You do. But can you guarantee to me that you're going to exercise the responsibility of creating a process that will guarantee a check and balance and independence in perpetuity? Don't tell me you can, because you cannot. That's not possible. To me, that's the biggest problem with this. So what is the motivation? I think you each have to explore what that motivation is. Is it political? Is it personal? Is it, what is it? Are we trying to save money? Is it a cost-saving device? Now, I, I'd be interested to look at that, but I got to tell you, I, I, I've got a report here that I'll share with you. I'll leave with the, the chair. It's from by I, Institute of Government Public Affairs, IGPA, we put this together. It's entitled, "Multiplicity of Governments: Paucity of Money: A Look at Options for Local Government Consolidation and Streamlining in Illinois." I, I participated with Jim Nolan and Dan McMillan to contribute to this report. We prepared it in response to the governor's request a few months ago. Unfortunately, I mean, from our point of view, unfortunately, we find little in the literature of systemic studies, of systematic studies on the cost consequences of consolidation in our governmental cooperation and sharing of services. Rather, we examined the recent major studies of local government restructuring in four different states that concluded generally and emphatically that consolidation of services into county governments has merit even if cost savings are not achieved. So there is some transparency, if that's what you're looking for, but I don't think you achieve transparency and independence and checks and balances with what you're talking about here. And that consolidation and streamlining have been pursued to at least establish a more rational transparent structure of local government. That could be a reason to streamline, but not in this case. This, this does not create, in my opinion, more transparency. It, it does the opposite. To answer whether Illinois state government can achieve cost savings or local government through consolidating or streamlining local government require some more empirical research. We at IGPA would love to do that research, but the research is not there and not available yet to show that if you did something like this in the name of consolidation and streamlining, that it would actually cause any sort of cost savings. So if that's the motivation, I think you need to look very carefully at that to see if that's the case. In fact, I, I would be more inclined to think that with a elected county auditor, you've got a better chance of having somebody that is going to provide the checks and balances, to provide the independence that will actually save money in the long run for the county. So I would urge that even though you have the right under the Constitution to put out a referendum and ask the people to eliminate the elected county auditor, I would urge you not to do that.
"The Multiplicity of Governments: Paucity of Money: A Look at Options for Local Government Consolidation: Streamlining in Illinois." Are we going to hear a motion received and placed on file?
So moved.
Second. You'll have to make it.
I'll move.
Yourself and Mr. Nudo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same motion carries, it's part of the file.
Thank you, Chairman Betts and distinguished members of the county board. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. I know you have a busy agenda and I'll be as brief as possible with my comments. By way of introduction, my name is Rick Fasson. I'm president of the State Auditors Association. I'm beginning my third term as county auditor in Madison County, Illinois. And I've had the honor of sitting, or you, or you good people are sitting tonight, as county board member. I've served six years there. In the middle of my second term, ran countywide and was fortunate enough to be elected. My compliments to this gentleman here and to Professor Rich for their comments. I concur wholeheartedly with what they said. There are studies to support what these two gentlemen said and also what I'm about to present to you. The idea of appointing a county official instead of versus election is not new to our system. I call to your attention that some years ago, the Association of Clerks, Recorders, Election Officials, and Treasurers, known as ICEROT, for whatever that means, I don't know, but that's just the initials, convinced, or commissioned a survey by the well-known Gallup Association Group. The purpose of the survey was to determine that the preferences of the general public towards whether they wanted to elect or appoint elected officials. The results of those surveys were this, my good people out there, two out of three people said they would prefer to vote for local officials rather than having them appointed. Three out of four stated that elected officials do a better job of managing local tax dollars than appointed officials do. And four out of five individuals stated that elected officials are more representative to the needs of the public than our appointed officials. I have no doubt that if that survey was ran again today, the results would be the same. The outcome of past referendum questions here in the state of Illinois has a history of supporting elected officials over appointments. I call to your attention that twice in McLean County, by margins of nearly two to one each time, voters decided that they wanted to continue to elect their county auditor rather than have him appointed. In Kane County, the proposition to continue to elect the county auditor versus appointing the county auditor was supported by a three to one margin of the polls. A similar result, result, a similar result occurred in Vermillion County where the, the proposal to replace a county auditor with an appointed county auditor was defeated by a margin of three to one. Clearly, when presented with this choice, the voters here in the state of Illinois have consistently rejected this idea. I think there's something that's, that's, needs to be said, and there's one common theme here with these speakers that I hear, and it's independence. I am a proponent of good government. I believe in good government. And I believe that elected positions should be independent. I think we went through this before and, and what you would do in appointing any one of these three offices is you would strike the independence notion of this, and I think that is critical to that situation. If in fact, you were choosing to, to appoint the county auditor, that auditor would be, as you guys know, you've been here before, and you ladies, he'd be answerable to the person that appointed him and no more. Where as, as the condition we have today, he is, as stated before by everybody, I don't mean to be redundant, but that's what we have here, he is responsive to the voters. And if the voters don't like what job this individual does, then out he goes after four years. All of us that are sitting in this room, or the county board, myself, and any other elected official, face that same criteria when we come up for election every four years. I would ask everybody tonight in the room to, to look at this and say that this, this question before you tonight is bigger than the individual. We're talking about an office that is responsive to the citizens of your county, and I know from practice that there are tough decisions to make. You guys make tough decisions every day. I went through this and we faced a lot of tough decisions in Madison County. Matter of fact, we've probably developed a reputation over the years down there for, for some of the decisions that we've had to make. But I can tell you from past practice and also from being a longtime manager in the private sector, I was director of a social service agency and their chief financial officer before I got elected to government. I served six years on the county board and I'm in my, as I said, I guess it'd be almost nine years now as auditor, going on nine years. And I have a great deal of respect for the work that you guys do and you ladies, I keep saying you guys, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to exclude the ladies in this, for the work that the county board does here. And I would urge you, as this gentleman has and Professor Rich, and to, to endorse the idea of not appointing your county auditor. I think you would be responsive to the taxpayers, you would be responsive to your constituents, and you would be a proponent of good government. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I'm Eva Yele. I'm a resident of Champaign County Board District Six. I'm absolutely floored following our distinguished former senator.
Senator Winkle.
And everybody else. Basically, the auditor's office is the one office that cannot be appointed. It, it needs to be elected by the voters. Otherwise, no matter what safeguards you put in place, no matter how much you talk about the election process and what have you, it's always going to have this little whiff of, I wonder what's going on. Okay? Please don't take the choice of auditor away from the voters. I thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I spent many years in county government. First, I was a county board member and then I was the county auditor for 16 years. And I did work with Rick Winkle's dad. I was the president of the Association of County Auditors. And one of the people that helped defeat that referendum in, in Vermillion County, I said, "Do you want a watchdog or a lapdog?" And the voters agreed. Just to give you a little history, in Champaign County, we've had some financial disasters. We had a state's attorney that went to prison for embezzling money. And the example of Enron that Tony brought up is, is a good example, because they had professional auditors from Arthur Andersen. And the, they were hired by Enron and they were not really independent because they were hired. And look what happened to Enron. And look what happened to Arthur Andersen, a very proud company that was brought down because of that financial disaster that was Enron. I'd like to talk about the duties of the auditor. It's not just financial auditing, it's also compliance auditing. And I think someone who is an attorney can be very good at compliance auditing, that's reading what the rules and regulations are, what the state laws are, and seeing if the county offices are following them. My background is an economist, so I have some financial background, but I was not a CPA. I hired the first CPA in Champaign County. And this county got, we were the first government in this area to get the award from the government finance officers for excellence in financial reporting, and also the first local government to get the award for excellence in budgeting. And in addition to saving money by preventing fraud, the auditor's office in this county has saved literally millions of dollars. One of the things that we did in the late 1970s was go to self-funding of workers' compensation. And I sent my staff and I went to a, a brief course in Arizona, University of Arizona. I know the gentleman who ran against me in 1980 said, "If they're so smart, why do they have to go to school?" Well, the voters returned me to office because we saved about $250,000 a year just by the workers' compensation. It wasn't until 1994 that the city of Urbana adopted that same process. And we did other kinds of saving of money, but if you just take a quarter of a million dollars a year, every four years, that's a million dollars. And up until now, it's probably even more than a million dollars every four years because the price of insurance has gone up. So if you really get serious about this, I'd be happy to go back and, and document the millions of dollars that the auditor's office has saved. But I think it's an office that's paid for itself, more than paid for itself. And there are the, all the things that Tony brought up, the independence. And I was happy that, that Professor Rich talked about education, because when I was the president of the Illinois Association of County Auditors, we upgraded the statute and one of the things that we included was mandatory continuing education. So I agree with the previous speakers. I think you'd be making a mistake to take away the independence of this office. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, board members. And I respectfully request that my statement be submitted to the minutes. I will give you a written copy and a few extra copies. I'm here as a lowly taxpayer. I do hold an elected office. It's nonpartisan. I'm on the Board of Trustees over at Rantoul at the I'm on the Board of Trustees over at Rantoul at the county regional office. We don't meet very often, but when something comes up, why, we're there. It's encouraging to see that the board is studying ways to consider saving the taxpayers' dollar. However, we would prefer to see a somewhat different focus. The Office of Recorder and Coroner, we see, is efficiently run with excellent service to the public. We've had personal experience with both offices and found them exemplary. The Recorder Office has been especially helpful to us on numerous occasions with a very helpful and cooperative staff. The volume of visits covered by this office would be too much to combine with another office. Efficiency would be sacrificed. The Coroner's Office was very helpful in the death of a relative who succumbed at home. We would have been totally shocked if someone would have shown up in a police uniform, believe me. Their service was prompt and sensitive to our situation. Service people in police uniform would be very inappropriate under those circumstances. The Coroner's Office serves as a check and balance in many instances and avoids conflict of interest situations. We do not favor combining these offices with any other offices, as we do not feel it would be a saving to the taxpayer, and you can see, that's my prime consideration. We have protested our property taxes this year, and believe me, we're going to protest our property taxes every year until we're under the sod. Now, don't let this gray head fool you, I had an ant live to be 102. The auditor is an entirely different story. It's become self-evident that an elected auditor is not needed, when it's been proven that present auditors seldom show up at their office. And I want to give Laura Pressing a lot of credit for her service as auditor. She was of the opposite political party of the boards, of the county boards, for years. She kept them in line, but now we have auditors and county board majorities of the same party. It's been politicized. I'm sorry. That's my personal opinion. The work's done by professionals anyway, and with an outside audit authorized by the county board, it could be a substantial saving to the taxpayer. We favor this being put on the ballot, and I guess I'm in the minority here, but I'm used to that. We favor this being put on the ballot in 2010. There are additional areas we would like to see to be considered. For example, the size of this county board. As long as the real representation is equalized, we'd like to see a reduction in this body. It's cumbersome to try to communicate with such a large body on issues of great importance to us as voters and taxpayers. Before I had recent surgery, I attempted to contact each representative regarding budgetary issues, especially the budget problems with the county nursing home. It was unbelievable, the various responses I received from a faction of the members I contacted. The responses varied greatly to the question of what was the biggest cause of our budget shortfalls. The reasons varied as followed. Well, there are two reasons for this. Number one, it's the nursing home. And then he further expanded on that reason. And number two is the nursing home. And he further explained that point. Then another person responded with a complete denial that the nursing home had anything to do with your budget shortfall. This person's reason held the reduced sales tax for the county was your money problems. I didn't get half the members contacted, but it was unbelievable, the different pages that the members seemed to be operating on. Unbelievable. Costs would be reduced with a smaller body, and hopefully communications would be improved. Incidentally, many of the conflicting answers came from folk of the same political persuasion. I do realize that the late reimbursements from the state puts this budget in a serious bind, and that's out of your control. What we would like to see on the ballot would be the question to privatize the nursing home. I'm told that it would be necessary to carry petitions to get it on the ballot. The county board certainly has proven beyond a reasonable doubt that a business such as the home cannot be run by committee. I've never known any viable business to be successfully run by committee in the private sector. Have you? Boards of directors, you know, they're rubber stamps in the private sector, but they really don't run anything. Answers to my question regarding privatizing the home varied from a calm, yes, we could do that, to a screaming tirade that this could not legally be done. I've been on this board blank number of years. You don't know what you're talking about. Shut your effin' mouth. Now, folks, I hung up on that colleague of yours. I did receive a tepid letter of apology, in which he stated, after saying it could not be legally done, that you had privatized the home by hiring a private consultant. Why do we still see this body still dealing with the issues if it's privatized? To summarize my comments, we favor the recorder and the coroner being elected positions. We favor placing the auditor's position on the ballot for an appointment, as long as you have reliable qualifications. We would favor a public discussion on privatizing the nursing home, and discussion for the reduction of the size of this board. My husband, Harry, would be here, I think I failed to give you my name, it's Marilyn Query. My husband would be here tonight, but he had cancer removed from his nose today. I'm opting for a Clark Gable nose. We want to thank you for your service and for your audience tonight. Signed, Harry and Marilyn Query in Urbana.
Anyone on the board wanting a copy?
It gets emailed out to everyone, it'll get faxed into machine.
It'll go to everyone.
Yep.
That's fine. I'll give this to you, secretary.
I would entertain a motion to place the comments of Ms. Query on the record. Moved by Nudo, seconded by Weibel. Discussion, all those in favor signify with an aye. Those opposed, the same motion carries. Andrew Flatch?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Andrew Flock, and I'm the Public Policy Manager for the Champaign County Chamber of Commerce, and I just have a brief statement I'd like to read. There is no doubt that for most, money is tight. Local municipalities, and especially the state, is analyzing ways to make their ends meet. When this happens, there is usually a heightened awareness by the general public on how government functions and how taxpayer dollars are used. Recently, this heightened awareness led to the local media and others calling into question the county auditor. It has led people to re-raise the question as to whether Champaign County really needs an elected county auditor. It even has members of the county board asking the same question. So in a bipartisan approach, two members of the county board have introduced a resolution for the November 2010 election, which would ask the voters to make that decision. At the April meeting of the Champaign County Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, the chamber board voted to support the resolution placing the question of eliminating the elected office of county auditor on the November 2, 2010 ballot. The chamber's support of this resolution is not targeted at the auditor's office, nor has the chamber taken a position on whether the county needs an elected auditor. Although it is likely that, as the November 2010 election draws closer, that we will take a position on whether we believe that an elected auditor is a good use of the taxpayer dollars, or whether there are more cost-effective ways to achieve the desired outcome. Our decision to support this resolution, however, is simply about giving the taxpayers the right to have their voice heard on how our government is structured and how our tax dollars are used. Thank you.
Al Klein?
I'm Al Klein of Urbana. I'll just second, I believe, the sentiments of Senator Winkle and others, who indicate that putting this on the ballot is, in a sense, a commitment of yours to a position. It's not merely asking the voters for an opinion on the form of government. I believe by putting this on the ballot, you are either picking one of two positions. You either believe that the office of auditor is administrative only, or that you can do without the autonomous oversight of an auditor, of an inspector general, if you like, or you are saying that you couldn't, you are promising to create an autonomous auditor with all of the powers and independence and autonomy of an elected officer without the need for the voters to actually elect that officer. And I think either case is bad, and therefore I am opposed to the notion of putting this on the ballot. Thank you.
Diana Vesick?
I'm Diana Vesick, Chair of the Champaign County Libertarian Party. I'm here tonight to speak about the importance of maintaining the auditor as an elected position. The public needs an independent watchdog, keeping an eye on county funds provided by taxpayers. Giving the county board direct control over the auditor is like having the wolf guard the chicken coop. The Champaign County Board has an unfortunate record regarding the supervision of public monies. Here are some examples. The board allowed the Champaign County nursing home to continue losing $100,000 a month until faced with imminent loss of state licensing. The county board facilities committee and the administrative staff allowed moldy wood to be installed during construction of the new nursing home. In October 2004, the county board finished paying $130,000 to Isaacson-Glarem for the East Campus Master Plan, yet the plan has still not been delivered. And while the board promised both 10 years ago and five years ago to determine whether offering early retirement actually saves money, no analysis has ever been done. Because the county board has abdicated responsibility in these matters, we need an independent elected auditor to look out for the taxpayers' interests. Please note that I said independent. The last few auditors have all been either chair of the Democratic Party or a Democrat with higher political aspirations. In effect, the party has used the auditor's position to provide a sinecure for those giving political service to the party. Had the party wanted a stronger or more competent auditor, they could have nominated someone else. The fact that key county board Democrats now have a beef with the person they appointed a few years ago and nominated to run again last fall doesn't mean that the auditor should no longer be elected. It just means that a better candidate should be found, and it means that the public should no longer blindly vote along party lines. This is one of the reasons third parties have become more vocal. In a perfect world, the auditor would be sufficiently strong and competent to provide a truly independent check on the county board. In the meantime, we need an independent bipartisan mechanism to investigate these kinds of issues as they come up and to provide backup for the auditor. Something like the Nursing Home Advisory Committee might be appropriate. If you say that this is a job that the finance committee or the board, if you say that this is a job for the finance committee or the board itself, then I would ask you why it hasn't been done. Many observers think that too much emphasis has been placed on getting along together rather than on asking hard questions and holding people accountable. And the media no longer seems to be interested in pursuing the kind of investigative reporting that would get to the bottom of problems such as the moldy wood. If the county board is serious about accountability, it can start by releasing documents related to the arbitration proceedings with nursing home contractors, and it can release the emails with county staff pertaining to the moldy woods installation. Although keeping them secret might lessen embarrassment to the county, it's not in the public's best interest. Openness means confessing one's mistakes so that the public knows what happened and is assured that it won't happen again. These discussions need to be held in the open and not behind closed doors. In the interests of accountability and maintaining trust in the system, the auditor needs to remain an elected position. Thank you.
Public comment is closed. I now turn the matter over to county board members if they wish to comment, being aware there is not a motion of any sort before this committee, and there never has been. Any members wish to comment? Mr. McGinty?
I'll be happy to start. First of all, you know, I've been on the board for going on five years, and that was probably the best public comment, most informed public comment, no matter what side of the fence you're on, that I've ever encountered. I just, I'm blown away by the quality of, especially those that focused on the issue, which I think is not the individual but the office. The only reason we're doing this, and I brought it up, I was part of the group, and you know, Greg Knott and I, about three years ago, brought it up again. This is maybe repetitive for some, but I've only been on for five years, and this is the first time we've gotten to this level of analysis of these offices. And I'll tell you, I've learned more in the last two nights about what these three offices do than I ever knew before. And I don't think it's really, yeah, I could have spent days and days with these folks, but that's not the reality of being a county board member, and those that have been county board members, I think, know that. We've tried to spend a little bit of time with the sheriff and at the nursing home and with, you know, all the different departments and see the operation, but we also do this on a part-time level, and so it's difficult to do that. Tony, I really appreciate the presentation. I think that this information helps a great deal. I am here to say that I have not decided on my stance about this. I think that the arguments on both sides are compelling. I do believe that in the best-case scenario, in situations where true independence can be achieved, that is what's desired. I think that's what people want. I think the reality of the situation and why some of this has turned personal is because of other reasons. I think we know what those reasons are. I don't want to rehash that. I think that there are factors, though. I think that the reality of it is that, you know, we wonder about these things on a personal level, and I try my best to keep that out of that. I don't know that all of us can do that. We have a subcommittee from this committee of policy that studies administrative structure. So there was a lady that talked about all the different things that we're discussing, the recorder's office, the coroner's office, number of administrators, the size of the board. I think this is all healthy discussion. It's been great for me to learn. I don't think that this is anything more than, this sort of study session allows us to make informed decisions, and isn't that what you want? You know, some people will think this is maybe a waste of time, but if we don't know and don't have this level of detail, what harm is there in getting it? So I think it's healthy. I do have a lot of questions, and maybe later I'll get into it. I have questions about the presentation, but for now, I just want to appreciate the public's comment, the presentation, the education that's happening here, and move from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Brennan. Other members? Mr. Kurtz?
I too want to reiterate Mr. McGinty's statement. The public participation tonight was absolutely excellent from some of our former and current high officials here from our county, and I want to thank them all for coming and informing us on their opinions and how they feel we should move forward. I also want to thank the auditor, the recorder of deeds, and the coroner for extremely comprehensive presentations, educational, to say the least. These presentations were quite enlightening and helped me to form a better opinion of each of these departments as I deliberate what we're going to do in the future. But my personal feeling is, I would rather not have an appointed official, simply because it would become a political football, and that's not where I want to go with this information. I think this information was extremely educational for all of us. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from committee members? Mr. Langenheim?
I question whether I should say anything at all, but I'm going to say it. I would hope that we remember that we're considering the office, not the holder of an office. In other words, this is not an evaluation of present or past auditors, it's an evaluation of the office itself.
Barbara Saki?
Well, I'm going to get down to a couple of specific questions. It's been said or alluded to in the course of the discussion so far, that in addition to having the services of an elected auditor of Champaign County... to having the services of an elected auditor of Champagne County also has an outside auditing firm that goes over the books yearly. And I guess my question would be, is this a redundancy? You know, if we have an outside auditor, is that auditor looking at the same thing that the elected auditor is looking at? Or how does their work complement each other?
Right. And actually, I want to thank you for the question, because as I was sitting here thinking, did I cover everything that I wanted to cover? I was like, oh, oh, outside auditor, I forgot to cover that. And the words you used are precisely the right words to use. They're not redundant, they are complementary. Our work can't be done without their work, and their work can't be done without our work. The annual audit that Champagne County produces every year that we receive an award of excellence for every year is produced by the Champagne County Auditor's Office. That work is then audited by an outside auditor. There's no duplication of effort at all, but that is just an extra safeguard that we have to have of an outside auditor to, we're auditing the books of the county, they're auditing our audit.
Is that common?
That would be my next question. Do the other 101 counties do something similar?
Mr. Fasson would have a better... Heads nodding yes.
Ma'am, if I step up the mic, come up to the microphone, please.
It feels strange talking to you through the mic. That is mandated. That's not, Tony doesn't have a choice in that. You have to have an outside auditing firm, and we go back to checks and balances, but I believe by law you have to do that. We have that in Madison County, we've got that in every county that we have. So, yes, that's not redundant. It's mandated, and you have to have that.
Barb, further questions?
Yeah, I do have another one. My understanding is that every office, every department in county government, whether it's an elected official headed by an elected official or an appointed official, does an annual evaluation review of the employees in their departments. Am I correct?
It is required of your appointed officials. It is up to the elected officials whether or not they follow that.
Can I ask, do you do an annual evaluation of your office staff?
I have not done a formal review process in the past two years. It's obviously, just from some of the training I've done with the State Association, something that has been brought up, and it's something I would like to do moving forward, but I have not yet done that.
So can I assume that the individual, well, first of all, I believe that virtually all of your staff is our veteran staff. They've been there for a number of years. So that, basically, they come in every day, do their job, much like they've always done their job, and there's no discussion, there's no, I don't know, interaction that suggests maybe there's a better way or a different way to do what they do and get done what they need to get done?
You know, the only change I've made in staffing in the auditor's office was the receptionist position, and that was not of my choosing, that was a union bumping rights I didn't want to come in and reinvent the wheel, and so on a day-to-day basis, the office's, the direct supervision of the other accountants is done by the chief deputy. And I've not, and I think quite wisely, not wanted to change that operation from the way it's been quite successfully done for many years. I know my chief deputy was actually hired by Auditor Pressing, and I think my second senior auditor was hired by Auditor Parr. The two additional auditors were hired by my immediate predecessor, Mike Ferrex. So as far as the work that the auditors themselves do, I haven't made any changes to that structure at all. I will tell you that, and I, you know, this is a time of belt-tightening in county government, and so we're not making any proposal here, but the auditors and the auditor's office are stretched very thin. There's a lot of work that gets done. We do over 80,000 accounting functions each year with a staff of, what is it, three and a half accountants? So they really do a phenomenal job, and I've not made changes in the way that's done on a day-to-day basis.
Can I ask just one more question?
Sure.
Ms. Bucie has already said to us that there's a pretty good probability that with the tightness of the economy and the tightness of the budget, that somewhere in county government we're going to have to find 6% reductions in costs. What will your office's contribution to that be?
That's a good question, because, you know, when you hear about the proverbial smaller offices that across-the-board cut hurts, you couldn't come up with a better example than the auditor's office. We have a $287,000 budget this previous year, and all but less than $20,000 of that is personnel costs. So when we have to do 6% of that whole amount, and we've got less than $20,000 in, you know, commodities and services to play with, it's pretty hard. If the board decides we need to do across-the-board 6% cut, I'll figure out a way to get 6% out of the budget, but I honestly don't know how that'll be accomplished at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Nuda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, it's going to be tough to take on Senator Winkle. He gave an Obama-like speech tonight, it was mesmerizing. I credit him for speaking out on the issue. I know he has some bias in terms of his father being a wonderful auditor, but I'm going to take it on, because I think there are some issues here that we really need to address objectively. Senator Winkle was very forceful in explaining how the Constitution works, the state Constitution. But I would point out that the Constitution does allow a referendum. We're being told by a number of speakers, don't allow that. You have the right to make that decision. Don't even let the voters have that option. There are some that want to vote for this option just by virtue of saying, let the voters speak. Now, there is the issue that they'll never be able to speak again. You know, that question comes up with every county that we have, and the majority of counties do not have elected auditors. Now, I'll grant you that the larger counties do, but somehow, some way, those counties seem to do it, and I don't hear of a lot of fraud and these issues that we're talking about here. Secondly, I like to talk about shades of gray. You know, black and white, there's lots of things in between that are really shades of gray. We're talking about the will of the voters, the will of the voters. Let them decide. If Mr. Fabry did not do his job, he'll be voted out. Let me take a little history lesson here, because I'm always regarded as one of the newer guys, but, you know, I think I know a little bit about what the history is of the auditor position. At some point in time, Mr. Fabry, one of your predecessors, Mr. Ferrex, was he initially elected?
He was initially appointed and then elected.
Yeah, he was initially appointed, wasn't he? And the majority of the party that was in power did that, made that happen. Wouldn't you agree?
I don't remember the vote, but sure.
You were on it, but you would remember, right?
No, not necessarily, but I'm sure.
You think the majority of your party did?
Sure.
Okay, I think that's a fair statement. Then he was elected again, he was elected for the first time, and the position was used, I can fairly safely say, as a springboard for Mr. Ferrex to take on other offices, and he's done very well in that office. But then he left the position after he was elected, I think a second time, correct? First time?
He was only elected once.
Oh, okay, one time. And then there was another appointment. Now, who was that appointment?
That was my appointment.
And what was your position in the Democratic Party at the time?
I was Democratic Party Chair, head of county board member.
So I'm wondering, and I'm sure that we can take a similar example from Republicans in a similar situation when we were the majority. I'm wondering if we're thwarting the will of the people when these kinds of things happen, that a person maybe had the greatest qualifications. Mr. Ferrex did not have an accounting or a financial background, nor did Mr. Fabry. I'm wondering if that thwarts the will of the voters. I'm wondering, then, too, on shades of gray, if we're talking about an appointed person who is supposedly at the beck and call of the county, if now we know that the county administrator is now charged with doing a hiring process, as we found with the IT person this last election, or this last year, we had nothing to do with it. The job qualifications were set by the county administrator, the interview process was done by the county administrator, we had several closed sessions giving appraisals of what was happening, but it was not any way, shape, or form a political appointment. Now, let's go, then, too, in shades of gray of an appointed person having the ability maybe to thwart or be involved, the Enron situation, for example. That's a capitalist, private party. Some of you may know the situation about Enron. Some of you may know that the auditor in question had a bonus involved with some of the shenanigans that he participated in. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I think this is an apples-and-oranges comparison. If you want to take a comparison of an auditor who did something illegal or incorrect that was elected versus appointed, I could support that. I can't support an Enron example. It has no bearing, no example that bears with this situation. You know, again, we saw the chart. The chart says that appointed person might be subservient to the county administrator or the county board. Shades of gray. What about a former county Democratic Chair addressing issues with a dominated Democratic Party on the board? I'm not advocating that that happens, or it will happen, it's shades of gray. There are going to be faults that occur with both situations. I believe there's a lot of people on this board who want the voters to take a look at this objectively. When I hear the fact that the president of the auditing situation, elected auditors, tell us that it's been defeated in this county, in this county, in this county, I say, why not let our voters vote and see if it happens here? Why are we prejudging that because it failed in McLean or Danville, that we don't have the right to produce the same kind of opportunity for our people, our voters? I'm going to reserve some other questions, because I really, I think that the things that we're talking about here, the presentation from public participation was wonderful, and I've learned a lot from Mr. Fabry's presentation as well. But I'm not persuaded that elected, appointed, or outsourced, we haven't discussed that, is the best way to do that. And I'm personally in favor of talking about outsourcing the day-to-day functions as well. Thank you.
Mr. Moshe.
I think I've been around here longer than anybody. I got a chance to serve with Rick when I came on this board. He was policy chairman. Laurel was just going out as the county auditor. I remember back in the '80s when you put that elected county executive thing on the ballot two or three times debating you on the radio over it when I was President of the Farm Bureau. And this is the first time I've ever seen you two agree on anything. I think Laurel's to be commended for hiring Carol Watley as in the position she's in, because when I was Chair of this board, if something we did was wrong, she was all over us. And it was usually Jerry Parr that came in, but it was Carol Watley that sniffed it out. And she's still doing that, because I'm on the RPC board with Ms. Pressing now, and she's still doing a good job of keeping track of a lot of things around here. I don't think it's necessary that this position is elected. I remember some of the battles you had with Glenn Kugel and with Terry Gardner in the Highway Department about some of the stuff they pulled, and you stopped it, and you were right. But somebody in your office found that so you could do your job, and you did your job. I enjoyed a lot of the battles you had with the county board. I don't know how many Rick got in on, but I was an observer, not here then, to pass judgment on this. But we're in dire straits financially here, and we've got to find a way to save some money in this county. And there's been plenty on the Republican side about appointing somebody so they can get elected, and that's happened twice while I've been on this board, and I'm not going to name any names. I just wish this wasn't so political. I mean, somebody that's in that office at least ought to understand cash accounting and accrual accounting, and be able to look at a financial statement and figure out what's going on. I've had to do that in my business for 35 years, but I've had to hire somebody to help do that. And I think that we've got those kind of people in your office now, and I hope you can keep them there, but to me, the people that back you up are a lot more important than you are. That's all I've got to say about it.
Jan.
Well, I'm here again tonight. As I said last night, I've learned a lot from the presentations. I appreciate them, and I appreciate the handouts that we've gotten. And I also appreciate the people who have come. But again, it's not a full room. We're talking about the public being interested and wanting to have input, but even though we've invited a number of groups, I see someone from the chamber responded, but I haven't seen really people from those other groups here. And so it's a lot like talking about county issues when you go out. Most of the public hasn't really spent a lot of time looking at it. I would hope that if it did go to referendum that they would, but I'm not sure that that would happen. So I think we have a responsibility as county board members, and I wish that our other county board members had come for the presentations as well, that they're going to have to decide whether this goes to referendum or not. So I just toss that out. As far as some of the references to party, I'm sure the Republicans have some of the same difficulties that the Democrats have. It's not like there are a lot of people out there. You know, we scour and look for people with backgrounds in some of these, and would be good, we know people who would be good at some of these positions, but they don't step forward always. So it's not like we've denied, and I'm sure, like I say, I'm sure the Republicans have not denied, other people who have the kind of qualifications that would be great for this job, but we have to go with what we have sometimes, too. So I guess I'm defending the parties somewhat in that statement. But I do hope that the public will read the media accounts, and maybe will be inspired to want to look a little more closely if we should ever get to the referendum. I'm not sure that I am in favor of that at this point. I'm not sure that I am in favor of that at this point.
Other comments from board members? Yes.
I kind of want to remind everybody what, reiterate something Steve just said here, that one of the impetuses for examining these county offices, or the auditor's office in particular, is again, the dire straits the county's in financially. That's something that I'm very concerned about, something I focus on a lot, and I think it's definitely something that we need to examine at a time when the News Gazette has reported in an article, March 15th, that from March 1st of '08 through February 28th of '09, based on phone records, that our elected auditor was in his office 75 of 250 working days. So, less than a third of the working days, he was actually in the office. And the question I think being raised here, and this is something nobody else has broached tonight, we're talking about appointed versus not appointed, but the question we need to look at, and people are asking, people are asking us as board members, and we're trying to be fiscally responsible and look at ways to cut costs. We're talking about cutting departments 6%, which very well could mean furloughing county employees. If the functions of the auditor's office are being completed without the contribution of this elected auditor two-thirds of the time, why do we need to pay him $80,000 per year to do that? That's really the question, and I think people need to look at that. The functions are being completed. You know, all this talk about appointed and accountability and all this stuff we're finding and all these claims and all that, the truth is, the auditor has only been in his office about a third of the time, and it's an ongoing problem. It's even, I know, continuing now. Everybody knows about it. So, here, we're paying this individual, paying Tony $80,000 a year to really work at a third of the time. Is that, that's something, certainly something needs to be addressed. I think the voters are definitely wanting to have a say in what goes on in that office.
Alan. I think so.
I'd just like to add to Jan's comments about how hard it is to find qualified people in a position like the auditor. The job description for coroner written by the Champagne County, even though it's an elected position and it doesn't hold, they don't have to. The job description, as far as qualifications, say that to perform this job successfully, an individual either performs or directs others to perform the responsibilities assigned by the coroner's office by law. The requirements listed above are representative of the knowledge, skill, and ability required. Generic in nature. The recorder is even more generic. It says to perform this job successfully, an individual must be able to perform each primary duty satisfactorily. The requirements listed below are representative of the job knowledge and skill, education experience as may be required. For the auditor, as far as the county can go, is they can say, we prefer experience in accounting and finance because state law does not mandate any qualifications. Now, if we had a state's attorney without a law degree, how would we feel about that person's qualifications? This is a much more technical job. I would say with the coroner's position and the recorder's position, if you have somebody who comes to work every day and busts their tail and listens to what the needs are, and I've spoken to many attorneys about Barb Fraschka, they will tell you that she has responded to their requests, and that is a well-run office. In other words, you can learn on the job, and you can do it, and you can be very effective. This job requires much more kinds of experience and background. And because the state, Mr. Winkle, does not provide a job qualification that I think is effective, unless we could get some state legislator to change that to require, we are much better served to have an appointed or an outsourced person or persons, a firm, that has the qualifications to do so. And I don't know if Tom's going to...
Brendan.
Actually, part of what I wanted to do is to ask if, you know, I really do want to focus on us and the position. It is difficult in this particular case because of the amount of exposure there's been to all of the obvious. So, I want to shift a gear and ask Tony if you would mind responding to two issues. The issue of job qualifications and the issue of attendance, the importance of those two things. You know, I think we all have heard it, and we've seen it in the media, and it's out there. So, respond, please.
As far as job qualifications, you know, there aren't, there is no requirement that you be an accountant. The, you know, neither party put forward candidates who were accountants in the past two elections. And really, that's not what the job of county auditor requires. It requires accountants in the office, but I think Ms. Pressing raised the issue of compliance auditing, and I found my legal background to be very useful as far as, I mean, this is government. Everything we do, we do as a creation of state statute or county ordinance, and I found my legal background to be very useful in doing the job of county auditor. As far as the attendance issue, I really, you know, don't particularly want to address that tonight because what's been in the media has been in the media, and that bell can't be unrung. I don't think that what's been in the media has been accurate. However, I obviously acknowledge that there are things that needed to change in my personal conduct in the office, and I'm, you know, I'm hoping to address that and for the voters who I am accountable to. But on the larger issue, when I came into this, I'll concede the point. You know, you can all think that I'm a horrible auditor. That's fine. This is about the office, and even if, you know, the worst that you think is true, the fact that you have an independent auditor who has the authority and the independence that come from being elected directly by the voters, that allows the professional staff to do the excellent job that they do. This really, really isn't about me. This is about allowing the staff to do what it is they need to do, and that can be done by an elected office that gives them that freedom.
Mike Richards.
When we're looking at this, I really think we need to take it away from the person and look at the office. I'm hearing that there are individuals here who think the Democratic Party might have misused that. That's why we should take it away, that the current person doesn't have the correct qualifications. I don't think that the current holder of this office is particularly relevant in this fight. He hasn't said whether if we keep this in an elected position, he's even going to run for reelection. Certainly, the Illinois comptroller, which is the statewide equivalent, also has a legal background, and to the best of my reckoning, at least three of the four Illinois comptrollers in my lifetime did not have a financial background. At least two of them were attorneys. And like they said, with compliance auditing, that's very important. What I think we need to think about, and if it goes to the voters, the voters need to think about, is that we certainly don't need less accountability here at the county. As we speak, we have a nursing home that's under federal investigation. We certainly, we don't need fewer checks and balances. We need as many checks and balances as possible. Somebody can explain how we're going to keep just as many or more checks and balances if we bring in an appointed auditor who's either accountable to the administrator or to the county board. I'm willing to hear that, but right now, unless somebody can explain how we're going to have some more accountability, and the county sure needs accountability, I don't think this sounds like a very good proposal.
Other comments from members or questions? Hearing none, we're adjourned. For the members of the Policy Committee, we will be having a meeting in August where we will...